Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 10th Madison City Council Meeting. At this time, I would like to invite Pastor Mike Oliver with Trinity Baptist Church to please lead us in an invocation and would ask that you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you. As vows, I pray. Lord, in this month of Thanksgiving, we are mindful of the many blessings you give us. We are grateful to live in Madison where we can work, play, raise our families, enjoy the diversity of neighbors, and where we can thrive. I am grateful for the good people who make their home in Madison. Tonight, I express my gratitude for Mayor Bartlet and the members of the Madison City Council. Thank you for their willingness to serve our great city. As it begin a new season of service, I pray you will bless them. Grant them wisdom for discerning the best paths forward among the often difficult options they will face. Help them to continue to build on the strong foundations of our past while looking to the opportunities of the future. Guide them to consensus and unity among themselves and among our citizens so that we may be strong and one. May they have patience and understanding as they diligently listen to all voices in our city. May they find joy in serving our city and the peace that comes from a job well done. In the days and months ahead, may they know how grateful we are that they have said yes to serving and leading our city. I pray also for their families, who will share these leaders with the people of Madison. I am mindful of the sacrifices that come with service and leadership. Lord, we are so excited to see what you have for us next in Madison. Whatever the future holds, we thank you for your blessings and we thank you for these servant leaders. Tonight, I lift up to you, Mayor Renee. I pray for the members of the council, Mara, David, Billy, Michael, Alice, Erica, and Kenneth. Bless them and keep them, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Bartlet?
Here.
Council President Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Beer?
Here.
Councilmember Goodson?
Here.
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Lesman?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No, there are no amendments to the agenda.
Excellent. Thank you. First up is our approval of minutes from October 27th. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Goodson and a second from Mr. Beer. Are there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have the vote, please?
Councilmember Goodson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Council President Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember McKay?
Aye.
Councilmember Lesman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Thank you. The amendments are accepted. We have our first presentation today, and that is with Chief Williams, recognizing the promotion ceremony of driver Sam Yates.
So tonight, we have one promotion that we would like to recognize. Sam Yates is being promoted from firefighter to driver. It was effective last pay period. Earlier this year, we shifted to doing a promotional process one time a year. So, we run through all ranks one time a year regardless of whether there's a vacancy in a position or not, and then we have a standing list for up to a year. So, earlier this year in April, we ran through this process, and the driver's process consisted of an oral interview, a written test, a pump scenario, and street driving. So, from there, we ranked all the candidates, and we now have a vacancy at driver. So, Sam Yates is officially being promoted to driver, and I will let his wife and son pin his badge.
Thank you, Chief Williams. At this time, we'll move into public comments. In keeping with symmetry with the Board of Education, city councils from our surrounding area and the Madison County Commission, public comments will be limited to three minutes. I ask that you come forward and state your name and your district. If you're not familiar with what your district is, please give us your street. You don't have to give us your house number, but just your street. And also, I realize that some people are uncomfortable coming forward since we are live streaming this event, and it's on Wow as well. So, I have placed business cards, or we have placed business cards on the back table. I would encourage you to take the business card of your council member or mayor and reach out at any time. I have not received any cards. We also have a card system that if you wanted to speak first, you could fill out a card. I've not received any comment cards, so I open the floor now for any public comments. Anyone who would like to come and address council, please come up.
Good evening. Heather Morgan, District 5, and congratulations, Mayor and Council. I'm speaking on behalf of I Vote Madison regarding Resolution 363R, the renewal of live streaming, recording, and archiving of city meetings. I want to begin by expressing appreciation. Recording and archiving began because residents expressed a strong desire for transparency, and the council listened. The partnership has made civic participation easier and has allowed more people to stay informed. Not everyone can attend meetings in person. Many residents are working during meeting times, others are caring for children or aging family members, or face challenges with transportation or accessibility. And realistically, even if none of those barriers extended, everyone can't fit inside City Hall. Recording and archiving removes those barriers. It ensures that every resident has access, just not the few who can be in the room. As we look ahead, we are pleased that Resolution 363R continues live streaming and archiving. And we have three suggestions that would make this strong policy even stronger and more transparent. First, we ask that all city council work sessions be recorded and archived, not just generally. Work sessions are often where we hear the discussion, the questions, and the reasoning behind decisions. Making those consistently available, except when the law requires, an executive decision, brings clarity and builds trust. Second, we encourage the city to pursue permanent archiving rather than archiving only through the end of the council term. Digital storage is inexpensive, and permanent archives protect institutional memory and allow future residents, councils, journalists, and students to access records years from now. Third, we ask the council to reconsider excluding interview meetings from being recorded and archived, especially when these interviews involve key, public-facing leadership roles. For example, the chief of police interviews were previously recorded and shared with the public, and that transparency served the community well. Removing access to interviews for major positions limits public insight into the philosophies and priorities of leaders who directly serve residents. These three adjustments are practical, achievable, and would keep Madison at the leading edge of open government in Alabama. We appreciate your commitment to transparency and look forward to partnering with you over the next four years to make government more accessible to every resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Is there anyone else that would like to address council at this time? Seeing...
Margie Daly, District 6. Give me a minute to set my iPad up. Welcome, new mayor and council. I'm speaking for documentation into the public record. I have been council-watching for 21 years now. I have 12 years of elected governance experience in a city of a quarter million. We, the people, will be observing and expecting you to adhere to State Ethics Code 36-25-5, file all personal and family gains over $5,000 to the ethics, and recuse from all votes where you have or have had skin in the game. Some obvious conflicts include NGOs and affiliates, including, not limited to, the Trash Pandas, Main Street, MVP, UAH, HHS, Palmer Park, Dublin Park, the AYSO, SBA, used properties, all business and contracted associates, Madison Chess, Kids Chess, just the tip of the iceberg on conflicts. No public official can vote or bring forth any projects tied to donors. Recuse, put your conflicts on the record, or face $10,000 fines and jail time. The Huntsville 100, all 350 members, contracts, any contracts coming before this body with members past and present. Winter in Winter, a metal building for a dog shelter costing the taxpayers more than a $1 million home per square foot. He's on the Huntsville 100. Har, builders, UAH, to name a few. Madison deserves clean government. Appointments with donations, its patterns, influence peddling, and play-to-pay. No more shadows. Terry Johnson, Julian Allen Sullivan, Tommy Overcash, Ed Nichols, and Mara, we have you on ring camera videos politicking instead of protecting the public, while the Madison DA sweeps August Borden under the rug. No more distractions. Your first agenda includes salary hikes, board seats, improvement to a leased Palmer Park, and contracts to...
Thank you, Mrs. Daly. You're out of time. Thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to address council at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we will close public comments, and we'll move into the consent agenda and Finance Committee report. Mr. Beer?
Thank you. The Finance Committee received the regular and periodic bills and reviewed those. There's also a few resolutions you'll see on the agenda, one with Woody Anderson Ford for a joint purchasing agreement, and then also one with a contract agreement for camera installation with Creek Technology Associates. The fourth item on the consent agenda is acceptance of a $500 donation from Tractor Supply to be deposited with the Madison Police Department donations account. Another thing to note outside of the consent agenda is we have set our new meetings for the fourth Monday, which is the second council meeting, at 4:45 going forward. So, the Finance Committee meetings will be at 4:45 on the fourth Monday of each month unless the council meeting is changed. And with that, I move to approve the consent agenda.
May I have a second, please?
All seconded.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Beer and a second from Councilmember McKay. Is there any discussion with regard to the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have the vote, please?
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Councilmember McKay?
Aye.
Council President Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodson?
Aye.
Councilmember Lesman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda is accepted. Now, we'll move into presentation and reports, and we'll begin with Mayor Bartlet.
Thank you. First, a big thank you to Pastor Oliver, who delivered the invocation this evening. We appreciate your words very much. Second, a reminder that City Hall will be closed for Veterans Day tomorrow. And at this time, we would like to recognize any veterans who are in the audience. Would you please stand? And we would like to give you a round of applause if we have any veterans in the audience. Thank you very much for your service. I know that there have been a lot of activities, and I'm not going to steal anyone's thunder in terms of some of the things that everyone has been very busy with this past week, but I did want to commend Madison Visionary Partners for hosting the first Gather Madison this Sunday. They had almost 500 people who came to share a meal with the community. I just really want to commend all the volunteers. A number of our city council members were there, along with other elected officials and volunteers, and we thank them very much for this inaugural event. Also, on Thanksgiving, I wanted to announce that Chuck's Fish is offering a free Thanksgiving lunch from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. This is something that Chuck's does in all of its locations, and this will be the first time that they're able to do that here in our community. And they're also taking donations, and those donations will then be given to Madison Visionary Partners in support of events like Gather Madison. So, thank you to Chuck's Fish. Finally, we announced at City Hall that we are hosting an Instagram photo contest partnering with the Chamber of Commerce, and this is going to be a quarterly contest so we can capture all seasons. The first quarter runs November 10th through January 19th. There's a form online for you to submit your photographs, and we will have an amateur and professional categories. So, even if you're an amateur, please consider submitting your seasonal photos. And that's all I have.
Thank you. District 2.
Okay. Well, I'm first, so I said I'm not going to hit every single event because then by the time we get to Councilmember White and Jackson, we'll be out. So, there was a lot of great events, so I'm going to leave those. I did love that MVP event as well. That was a great event. She had a chance to get out. I do want to thank Mayor Bartlet, the current council, all the department heads, and all the department staff. The amount of training and onboarding and transition that we've had has been incredible. So, obviously, a lot of us are new up here. There's going to be a little time for learning, but the transition period that everybody set up for all of us was incredible, as well as ALM training. Also, I want to just do a quick thank you to Councilmember Spears, who also, for months, helped me in the transition and training. So, a huge shout-out to her. And then, this past week, it was two weekends ago, I got to do a ride-along with MPD, Madison Police Department. And I will say, it was unbelievable seeing the patience that our police officers have with the number of calls that were responded to, and I just want to give a huge shout-out to this job that they do every day. The other thing is, I learned a ton during the ride-along and the shift change of the needs of the officers. So, just like in the campaigns on council, we just continue to learn. The more y'all engage with us, the more we learn. So, I appreciate the police officers sharing, continuing to work on those items they shared, and encourage you all to keep sharing with us so we can continue to learn and react. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. District 3, please.
So, I have one resolution to bring to the council. It's Resolution Number 2025-359-R, and that's for a $250 expenditure for Santa, which will be used... Santa will be downtown on December 5th, is Friday. That's when we're doing the Polar Express Christmas Trail, and then we have activities that whole weekend. So, really looking forward to a big weekend of activity that. But this is the 250 for Santa.
Very good. May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Lesman and a second from Councilmember White. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have the vote, please?
Councilmember Lesman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Council President Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodson?
Aye.
Councilmember McKay?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Anything else?
I would just echo a lot of the same things that David said, but not belabor. But just a huge shout-out to MVP in that event yesterday. That was phenomenal. Few were able to be there together as we gathered. It was just a great day. Weather wasn't the most supportive, but the people sure were fun to be around. It was a great day.
Wonderful. Thank you. District 4?
Nothing to report tonight.
Yes, sir. District 5?
I would like to give a shout-out to the Madison Chamber for a great holiday party last Friday that we all attended, and they recognized many businesses, and there was awards given, and we all got some nice gifts. So, thank you to the Chamber. So, I'll just say that event because we've all attended quite a few this first week of us being on council, so I'll leave some for the others. But thank you all for all the events. They were fantastic. We appreciate all the invitations. I have four resolutions. The first one is Resolution Number 2025-372-R, appointing and establishing the salary for the city attorney of the city of Madison, Alabama.
May I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Goodson and a second from Mr. Beer. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have the vote, please?
Councilmember Goodson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Council President Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember McKay?
Aye.
Councilmember Lesman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay. The next resolution is Resolution Number 2025-373-R, appointing and establishing the salary for the city clerk-treasurer of the city of Madison, Alabama.
May I have a motion and a second, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember White and a second from Councilmember McKay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have the vote, please?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McKay?
Aye.
Council President Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodson?
Aye.
Councilmember Lesman?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Okay. Next one is Resolution Number 2025-374-R, appointing and establishing the salary for the fire chief of the city of Madison, Alabama.
May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Beer and a second from Mr. Goodson. Is there any discussion? May I have the vote, please?
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodson?
Aye.
Council President Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember McKay?
Aye.
Councilmember Lesman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes.
And the last resolution is Resolution Number 2025-375-R, appointing and establishing the salary for the police chief of the city of Madison, Alabama.
May I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion to approve.
And a second, please?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Goodson and a second from Mr. Beer. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have the vote, please?
Councilmember Goodson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Council President Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember McKay?
Aye.
Councilmember Lesman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. Anything else?
No. That's it. Thank you.
District 6, please.
Yes. Hi. Good evening, everyone. Just to add on, another event that we all attended this week was sponsored by the Huntsville India Association. It was the Diwali Celebration. Several of us attended, and we had a wonderful time. We were welcome onstage. We saw many performances. They were wonderful. We had food served. There were shopping set up for us. So, it was a really good, you know, event. It was at James Clements High School. It was well-attended by several members of the community, so we enjoyed it. So, thank you all. We're happy to be here, and we're ready to serve.
Thank you so much. District 7?
Yes, I have a few announcements. So, first, Madison City Schools is hosting a mental health fair this Thursday. It's from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Midtown Elementary School. There'll be experts to answer questions, family activities to promote wellness, and student art on the topic. So, if you're interested, try to make it up for that. Also, there's an opening for District 7 residents on the Police Citizens Advisory Committee. So, if you're interested, please apply on the city's website. The Beautification and Tree Board is also seeking new members, so you can fill out an application for that in the same place. And they're also going to have their fall litter cleanup on Saturday, November 22nd. If you'd like to join, meet in the west parking lot of James Clements High School at 9:00 a.m. Once again, that's Saturday, November 22nd, for the fall cleanup. And then finally, I have a weekly newsletter that's going out mostly for District 7 residents, but for anyone else that's interested, feel free to sign up at kennethjackson.org. My contact info and socials are linked there as well. And that's all for me.
Very good. Thank you. I'd like to also mention an event that several of us attended, and that was the Hogan Breakfast, recognizing our veterans. It's always wonderful to be there and recognize especially some of our older veterans from the Vietnam era. And all of your council and mayor attended the Alabama League of Municipalities Training. This is training that was mandated by the legislature in 2024, and so we are off to a great start getting that valuable training with regards to Open Meeting Act, ethics training, and things like that. Very positive experience. And I did want to announce that we will have our first work session here in council chambers on November 19th at 5:30, and the agenda will be posted tomorrow for those items.
Wednesday.
I mean, I'm sorry. Tomorrow's Veterans Day. It'll be posted Wednesday with those agenda items. And that's all I have, so we'll move into board and committee appointments. And the first one is for the Planning Commission with a term that expires November 4th, 2029. Do I have a nomination?
Move to appoint Councilmember White.
Thank you. Mr. Beer has recommended appointment of Councilmember White. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we will... I think we have to vote on this. No. We approve by acclamation.
Acclamation.
If there are no other nominations, it's approved.
We will accept Councilmember White as our Planning Commission member. Thank you for serving. Our second item is appointment to Place 3 of the Water and Wastewater Board with a term expiration of November 4th, 2029. May I have a nomination, please?
I nominate Council President Mara Robleski.
Thank you very much. I look forward to serving unless there are any other... I guess you shouldn't put the cart before the horse. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, I will be honored to serve on that board for the term. Our last one is the appointment of Mr. Scott Moats... Moats?
Moats.
Moats, excuse me, to seat 3 of the Madison Police Citizens Advisory Committee with a term expiration of April 27th, 2029. Mr. Goodson, I believe this is your nomination?
It is. These positions are all appointed by the district... As Kevin... As Kenneth mentioned, you know, District 7 has a vacancy on this, District 2 as well. District 3 became vacant with my transition to council, and Scott Moats is a recent graduate of the Civic Engagement, so that continues to pay dividends to the city. Thanks for Tracy's hard work in that. And so, anyway, appointing or moving for Scott Moats to be my replacement.
Very good. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we will appoint Mr. Moats to the Police Advisory Committee. Thank you, sir, for being willing to serve. We appreciate your time. I don't believe... We do have one... Wait. No. We do not have any public hearings, so we will move into department reports. And first up, Mr. Johnson with Engineering.
Okay. First, I have Resolution Number 2025-355-R. This is authorizing a professional services agreement with SNME Incorporated for environmental consulting for the FY 2026 wet weather monitoring not to exceed $21,840 to be paid from the engineering stormwater budget, Fund 11.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. McKay and a second from Mrs. White. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have the vote, please?
Councilmember McKay?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Council President Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodson?
Aye.
Councilmember Lesman?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes.
And next I have Resolution Number 2025-360-R, awarding bid number 2025-019-ITB for the Old Madison Pike Hughes Road Intersection Improvements Project to Rogers Group Incorporated in the amount of $1,071,000 to be paid from Fund 38.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. White and a second from Mr. Jackson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have the vote, please?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Council President Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodson?
Aye.
Councilmember McKay?
Aye.
Councilmember Lesman?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next up is Fire Chief Williams.
I have Resolution Number 2025-370-R, declaring one 2002 E1 fire engine surplus and further authorizing its sale through online auction and gov deals. So this is a truck that the pump blew up in it several years ago, maybe like five or six years ago. So it's of no use to us, and we just want to get rid of it and see what we can get out of it.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Beer and a second from Mr. Jackson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have the vote, please?
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Council President Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodson?
Aye.
Councilmember McKay?
Aye.
Councilmember Lesman?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you, chief. Next up is Legal.
Good evening. I have one item for your consideration tonight. This is Resolution 2025-363-R. This resolution authorizes renewal of the city's resolution from 2021 that authorized live streaming and recording and posting of city council, planning commission, and zoning board of adjustment meetings on the city website. This resolution continues that policy, and it expands it to city council work sessions. I know we use the word generally, but it will be standard operating practice for those to be livestreamed, recorded, and posted unless a very sensitive topic is discussed. We are recommending to keep interviews and executive sessions while there'll be, certain portions of those meetings may be open to the public. Here at City Hall, they may not necessarily be livestreamed to encourage more applications to boards that may or may not, for certain positions, have to be out in the public and on TV from time to time. So we also added a paragraph in this resolution to note that if there are technical issues where we can't livestream one night, we're going to record it and post it as soon as possible, but the meetings will proceed at their regularly scheduled time, because that's what's called for in the city code. So with that, I'd like to ask for your approval, and I'd be glad to take any questions that you have.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Goodson and a second from Mrs. Lesman. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have the vote, please?
Councilmember Goodson?
Aye.
Councilmember Lesman?
Aye.
Council President Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Councilmember McKay?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Public Works.
I've got five resolutions for your consideration tonight. Resolution Number 2025-365-R, authorization, authorizing the purchase of the 2026 tandem axle dump truck from Truck Works through Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative, 191, 148, 47, to be paid for by replacement funds, Public Works.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Jackson and a second from Mrs. White. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have the vote, please?
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Council President Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodson?
Aye.
Councilmember McKay?
Aye.
Councilmember Lesman?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Resolution 2025-366-R is authorizing the purchase of one track loader from Thompson Tractor Company through Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative, be paid for for capital improvement projects, Public Works.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second, please?
On motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. McKay and a second from Mrs. Lesman. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have the vote, please?
Councilmember McKay?
Aye.
Councilmember Lesman?
Aye.
Council President Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodson?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Resolution 2025-367-R, authorizing the purchase of one mini excavator from Thompson Tractor Company through Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative, be paid for by Public Works capital improvement funds.
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Beer and a second from Mrs. White. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have the vote, please?
Councilmember Beer?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Council President Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodson?
Aye.
Councilmember McKay?
Aye.
Councilmember Lesman?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Resolution 2025-368-R, authorizing the purchase of a 2026 F-554-404 crew cab flatbed from Woody Anderson through City of Huntsville Joint Purchasing Agreement, be paid for by capital replacement fund, Public Works.
Thank you.